I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And now can I have roll call, please?
Sure. Ken Nelson.
Here.
Virginia Higley here. Linda DeGray.
Here.
Charlie Lad.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
Dan Thurler good. Mary Scott. Rich Suzak and Frank Alamo. So we have one, two, three, four, five. So we have five.
So we have enough, right, we have, we have enough for a quorum. I did receive texts from Rich Suzak and Frank Alamo. They are both having problems trying to log on to the link for some reason. And this is exactly why we need to get back to the chambers as soon as possible, so this doesn't happen. Next, can I get a motion for the approval of minutes from July 9th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Are there any additions, alterations, or corrections that are needed?
I have one.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Page 12, third paragraph up in the bottom. Let me find it here. Spell check actually on the word site. It should be site like eyesight. Says Mr. Skelly's, you know. Mr. Skelly stated that the crosswalk to Winaway has good site distance. That should be site like S I G H T site.
Okay. Anything else?
That was it. Another good job.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve as amended?
Uh, I make, uh, so moved.
In a second.
Seconded.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, minutes pass. Next is public participation. Is there anybody out there that would like to speak to the commission about any issues not currently on our agenda at this time? If you would like to speak to the commission, please state your name and address for the record. Anyone? Seeing none, moving on to bond releases. Do we have any bond releases tonight?
Uh, nope, no bond releases. Yep, there's nothing.
Okay, then moving on, continued public hearings. Uh, new public hearing, PH 2973 55 Cottage Road.
Um, that one, we are still working on the text amendment for. Um, so we're probably going to be looking to do special permit, I mean, a special meeting. Um, sometime in August. I know we already have one scheduled for, um, the public, the other public hearings, um, that were on this agenda. But we'll probably need to do one more because we are extremely busy and that's one project that we would want to move forward. Um, and we also have a couple other pending applications that will need to move forward, um, as well. Or who would like to move forward, um, without having to wait until September.
Okay, just keep us posted how it goes and, uh, we'll discuss a special meeting at the time that we're ready for it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next, public hearing 2979 25 and 39 Hazard Avenue.
That's another one, uh, that, that was, um, there's an attorney who, uh, found that we didn't have the right date on the website for the public hearings. Um, that were scheduled, so this one is actually scheduled to be on for August 3rd. We have the legal ad up and everything's correct and set for that date on Monday, August 3rd, so.
Okay, so anyone here who was wanting to partake in that public hearing, just August 3rd, same time, same place. Next, public hearing 2080 118 Hazard Avenue. Ken?
That's the same, the same deal. That's also on for August 3rd.
Okay, um, moving on, old business. See any?
Um, uh, no, no old business.
Okay, Lori, if you get a chance, can you email Frank Alamo and Rich Suzak the link to get in the meeting because they're both texting me? Oh, Rich is in, all right. Frank is texting me. He still can't get in with the link I sent him. Thank you. Moving on to new business.
Um, Mr. Chair, I don't know if you wanted to see any alternate on tonight.
I was hoping, I was hoping that before that had to happen, everybody could get in because I know they're here. They just can't log on, like Rich just came in. So, um, for the eight dash 24 referrals, um, I'd like to see Commissioner John Petronella.
Yeah, I'm, I got on late, sorry about that.
No, that's all right. Everybody's having problems, John. It's okay. Um, eight dash 24 referrals, A.
Um, so for this one, uh, this is the property that, uh, the house had been burned in a fire. Um, the house and all the buildings on the property had, uh, have been demolished. And, uh, they would like to move forward with putting the property on the market, um, to convey, convey it. So there isn't, um, actually a buyer yet. Uh, but, um, they would just need a, some sort of, um, recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, to town council to convey the property.
That's great. It's nice to see they finally took them down. Looks so much better over there. Um, commissioners, questions, comments, or concerns?
Nope.
I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we provide a positive referral for 32 Church Street. As, um, indicated in our, I guess, packet in, in the resolution that we have.
Great. I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded by Commissioner Petronella. All in favor say aye.
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 Uh, it's unanimous. Okay, moving on to 28 South River Street.
I'm here, Chairman Nelson.
Oh, Commissioner Alamo's here, okay.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Moving on to 28 South River Street.
Um, the same deal. It was a blighted property. The buildings have been demolished and they would like to put it on the market, um, and get it back on the tax.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chair, you know, I, I thought when we had our review of the Thompsonville regulations that we were looking at, you know, possibly some passive recreational area for the town residents. And, you know, look, seeing that it's relatively close to the, I guess, boat launch area and that the boat launch area could get somewhat overwhelmed during certain, you know, times of the year and during certain, you know, times of the day, um, that we were leaning towards, you know, possibly utilizing that space to create some passive recreation for the town residents as that's the only parcel that the town has control over that is actually on a river that's, you know, not allocated for any specific use. And, you know, looking at it, you know, from a long-term viewpoint, I think that it would be advantageous for the town to, you know, maintain the possession of that land so that it could be utilized and possibly, you know, coupled with some additional, you know, purchases of some property to create an avenue for the town residents to actually have some place to get to the river rather than just a boat launch area.
Anyone else? Commissioner Suzak, I, I tend to agree that I did hear, um, similar things, um, but actually it was about Church Street trying to thin out the density down there and, you know, possibly a grassy area or something. So, I don't know how you want to proceed at this point. You can ask the commission, um, to vote unfavorably if that's what you choose.
Well, I, I think that, you know, I think that what, what we need to do is take a long-term look at, you know, what's for the best of the town residents and the town in general. In terms of, you know, we're always lamenting that we don't have any access to the river or the, the river access is very limited due to the fact that the majority of the properties there are owned by, you know, private individuals. And, and obviously what we don't want to do is, you know, create and, and, you know, a situation where, you know, we're putting pressure on, you know, certain properties that, you know, don't necessarily need to have that pressure and, and, you know, it, I, I think that, you know, again, planning-wise, that it would be a, a good long-term plan to create some kind of a town-owned property that has direct access to the river that's, you know, more than, you know, just a driveway. And, and I think that it, it should have, you know, and, and, and the long-term plan for the town possibly should be that, you know, we, we do want to create some park or some access to, you know, to the river along that area because of the, the proximity to the train station and, and, you know, the platforms that might be going there. And it just seems that, you know, we're, we're, we're not being prudent in, in some of our decision-making. You know, recognizing that it's not a revenue, you know, creating property now, but, you know, long-term, it could have a significant positive effect on the lives and, you know, just the general well-being of that, that area, you know, for, for, you know, the entire zone.
Right, is that property actually, does that property actually have river access? If I'm correct, it's a pretty steep bank, isn't it?
It's right on the river in terms of, you know, I think that we have to start somewhere and, and, you know, we, we could always create, you know, some kind of a, you know, transition, you know, down to a lower level. Um, you know, basically, you, you know, we, we keep talking about, you know, trying to create, you know, user-friendly areas in town and, and how do we get people to go, actually go down into Thompsonville? And realistically, you know, that would be, you know, an avenue that, you know, if we can create a, a destiny for people to go to, then, you know, obviously right now it's relatively small, but, you know, as we, you know, look to the future and, and as, you know, properties get, you know, put up for sale, the town could be the first person to make an offer on a piece of property and, and actually start absorbing some of these, you know, properties that are adjacent to it. You know, most properties don't stay, you know, unlisted forever, you know. Eventually, you know, people, you know, move on or they move out of town or the, they have a different area where they want to live. So they always put their properties up for sale. And I think that, you know, what we need to do is have a foothold there so that we can create some kind of an avenue for us to, you know, go forward and, and create, again, some kind of a user-friendly area for the town residents to have.
So if we were to go forward, Rich, and we were to add your comments with the eight dash 24 back to the council, would you be okay with that? Because I think the council is fully aware of the, um, necessity for riverfrontage considering what they're trying to do with the train station and stuff down there. And if we put your comments on record, they're going to be aware where you stand. But at this point, um, like I said, the town council is very aware of what's going on down there. And I would think that they're trying to recoup their costs for demolishing these two buildings by selling the properties. Or, you know, your comments may make them rethink, you know, let's hold off a year or maybe even two and see, um, what the future of this train station is, if there's a future, because who knows nowadays what's going on?
Yeah, like you said, you know, I, I think that, you know, what we need to do is, is make, and, and again, you know, I, I think that, you know, sometimes, you know, people are so concerned about revenue and in terms of, I, I think that we're all concerned about revenue and we're all concerned about your taxes being raised. But, but we also should be looking at, you know, what's best for, for the town itself. And, and, and I think that this is one area that we are, are definitely lacking in having accessible areas for the town residents to utilize. Um, and, and even as, as a fishing area, you know, obviously with, with boats going in and out of, of the, you know, the, 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 the loading dock area, um, or the boat launch area, you know, it, it would give, you know, people an, an, a place to just, you know, throw a, a fishing rod into the, to the river to try to catch some fish, so, but.
Again, I, Rich, I agree with you. I'm just not sure this is the property because there is no way. I looked at that property years ago when it was up for sale before the last owner gave it up or whatever happened. And there is no way to access the river from the top of that property. So a fisherman is going to have to cross the backyards of the people who are but both sides of that. And I'm not willing to have that happen. And I think the town should be more concerned about a lawsuit if somebody does fall off of that. Um, I, I'm going to call it a cliff because it's pretty much straight down to the river. Maybe when the river's low, there's a, you know, sandy area that you could walk along. But, um, that's a pretty, pretty steep escarpment right there. So, um, Lori, if we can note Rich's comments for the eight dash 24 when it goes back to the town council. And maybe, maybe even have a town counselor read his comments into the record. So he's on the town council's record.
Think you do that?
Yeah, okay. Anybody else? Seeing none?
I have a question.
We got to start raising hands, guys.
Hands up, Ken.
I don't see anything. All right, my bad then.
No problem. I forgive you. Um, could you bring that parcel up, Lori, uh, to us? Can we see it?
Maybe, Jen, I'm, I'm not the host, Jen.
Oh, Jen's our host, okay. Host, Jen, aye?
It's on sheet number 528 because I'm looking at it myself. 528 out of 635 sheets from our packet.
Want the packet that was too big to download?
Yeah. The one that you picked up at my house.
Oh, yeah.
That packet.
That one, okay. I got that as a part of it over there.
Well, well, actually, it's, it's the, you know, the, the downloadable package that we have that has the 635 sheet.
I'd just like to see the parcel of that thing. And, and I kind of, I kind of agree. I think it's what, uh, Chairman Nelson was describing. I'm familiar with those parcels. Very familiar with the river along the way there, uh, a lot of experience, uh, in that area. I'd like to see it. I think it's the one Ken's talking about.
It's pretty unique. When you drive down, you see old cars sticking out of the bank and everything else.
Yeah, I think I know which one it is. Um, and it's not, like you're saying, I believe it's not like a little hill. It's, it's a drop. Okay, if we can get it up.
Uh, yep, I'm working on it. Just give me one minute. I'm, I'm gonna, I'll pull it up on, um, it might be easier to see from Google Maps than it is from this.
I, I think as well that if you do own a property down there, I don't think your property line goes to the river either. I think the state has a right of way. That's it right there, Jen?
Yep, so right here, yeah. And, uh, I did, this is what was in the packet, the aerial view of it.
You own the high water line, Frank.
What's that?
You own to the high water line.
The high water line.
Um, I can, if you want.
What was that, Jen?
I can do, I can put it on street view if you want, so you can see.
No, that's not going to show. He's looking for like an elevation map, which you're not going to see.
Geography.
Right.
GIS.
It's that third house down from the boat landing.
So I, I will say that I have walked the site. And the site has, the cliff that is involved is actually a dump. There are cars and things buried there. Um, it was a very expensive site for the town to, um, demolish the structures. And, um, I do know that the, I believe that the town would like to recoup them when it were done. And you can get down from the north side. It, it is very steep. I suppose a pathway could be created. But, um, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure what, where the, you know, how the property is going to get cleaned up from here.
Okay, Commissioner Alamo, you all set?
I am, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, can I get a motion for a recommendable eight dash 24 for 28 South River Street?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Roll call, please. Now, if you're vote, if you're voting in favor, you're voting for a positive referral. If you're voting against, you're against it, so. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say the town council knows what they're doing. I'm for.
Uh, Frank Alamo.
I am for.
Vinnie Grillo. Oh, he's not voting, I'm sorry. Um, Charles Lad.
For.
Linda DeGray.
For.
Virginia Higley.
For.
John Petronella.
For.
And Richard Suzak is against.
Okay, so I believe that was six in favor, one against. If my math was right, motion passes. Moving on, flood permits, FLD number 40 55 Cottage Road. I believe we're tabling that also.
Uh, yes, sorry, I was muted.
And also FLD 41.
Yep, that'll be on for August 3rd as well.
Okay. Moving on, next, site plan review, SPR 1829 10 Hazard Avenue.
So I don't believe the applicant was able to make it. Um, this was originally, um, an administrative approval, but when we saw the size of the addition proposed, we put it on for a site plan review. Uh, basically they, uh.
Jen, this is, this is Nate Kerschner. I'm actually here on behalf of the applicant.
Oh, you're here, okay. I had an automatic reply from the person that I had originally sent the, uh, from the applicant.
Yes, Dave, uh, correct. Dave had sent an email to a couple of people at town staff. He's on vacation this week. Uh, I'm, I'm his supervisor, so I, I, I'm, I'm here this evening. So, not to throw a wrench in the machine, but, uh, and I do have a, a brief presentation if everybody wants to hear it. And I didn't mean to interrupt you, so by all means, finish.
Absolutely. That's what people need to do in these times. Um, so go ahead, Nate, just state your name and, um, your affiliation with the company for the record and go ahead with your presentation.
Absolutely. Um, I've done enough of these recently where I am going to just work out the IT kink and make sure you guys can, uh, see my screen before I get too formal in my presentation. Uh, in theory now you should have a PowerPoint presentation in front of you.
Yep.
All right. Uh, I guess in first and foremost, I would like to open by saying, um, I was in front of this commission, I believe in January, for the Chase Bank Out parcel. Um, so, well, it is a pleasure to be in front of the commission again, uh, the unique situation we're in. Um, appreciate the flexibility and ability, you know, your willingness to do this, uh, in a creative manner. So thank you for that. Um, and thank you for allowing me to present again. Uh, for the record, my name is Nathan Kerschner. I'm a senior project manager with Langen Engineering out of New Haven, Connecticut, uh, 555 Long Wharf Drive, New Haven, Connecticut. Uh, here on behalf of the applicant, which is, um, uh, the actual formal name is Equity One Northeast Portfolio LLC.
We need to mute somebody.
Did I say, I say something wrong? That didn't sound positive.
Sorry.
Nope, um, formerly Regency Centers, uh, is the, is the applicant. The property in question is, uh, known as 50 Hazard Avenue. It's also known as 10 Hazard Ave. Uh, it's the Brook, um, Brookside Plaza. The, for a quick orientation, one thing I do like about doing these remotely is you guys can usually see my cursor better than if I'm pointing across a room. For orientation purposes, yellow represents the entire plaza, uh, north, which is up, true north on this plan, um, is Hazard Ave. Um, to the east is Freshwater Boulevard, uh, Rosario T. Vella Avenue is to the south, and then Phoenix Avenue is to the west. Uh, just kind of working counterclockwise across the property. Um, as I mentioned, we did in the winter, uh, if you guys can see my cursor, um, received approval for a Chase Bank Out parcel next to the men's warehouse in what is the northeast corner of the property. Uh, that's currently under construction. Things are going, uh, quite smoothly with that. Um, and then tonight's application is with respect to the yellow rectangle kind of center of the site, uh, which is the Walgreens or what is now the vacant Walgreens space. Regency has, uh, worked out a lease agreement with, uh, what was Burlington Co-Factories is now Burlington, um, for this space. Uh, in order to meet their operational needs, they do need some more storage for their space. Uh, tonight's application proposes a 6,300 square foot, uh, addition to the rear of that facility, uh, as well as some minor site, site modifications to accommodate that expansion, uh, and ensure we're, we're complying with the zoning regulations. This here is a zoom in, just of the existing conditions. Um, one thing I'd like, uh, the commissioners to please take note of is there's a couple landscaped islands on either side of the existing Walgreens box that are intended to help ensure the, um, the impervious coverage requirements are met, or pervious coverage really, um, are complied with. Um, these are being modified, as you'll see in the next slide. Here, you can see the two gray boxes on either side of the existing are the proposed expansion. And then there is a modification to both those landscaped islands. Um, the reason for that is in order to accommodate the truck access for the, um, loading, the, the new loading area, uh, we did have to take away a little bit of landscaping on the eastern landscaped island. Try easy to see if I go back a slide. So we did take a little landscaping away from the eastern landscaped island, and then we did add it, uh, to the western landscaped island. In the application, there's a couple of truck turning templates that show that all the 18-wheelers can make and service all the existing, um, tenants and, you know, in the same, uh, same manner that they are today. Um, also of note, I, and, and this may be recalled from the chase, which we are showing just for, for reference in the top right of the screen. Uh, there's some pretty interesting wetland delineations on town mapping. And, um, so we did appear in front of the inland wetlands commission, I believe, last month, uh, for a permit, for a permit need determination. Uh, they did, did not determine that we do not need an app, a permit. What they determined was, uh, there would be an administrative approval of the, uh, inland wetlands permit application now. You can see the wetland line runs right through the building, um, but there's some sensitivity because there are, in fact, real wetlands. Everything on site is obviously paved, uh, but across the street, uh, they just want to make sure town staff is looking at our erosion sediment control and ensuring particularly during construction, um, we don't do anything that adversely impacts those wetlands. Uh, and again, the site plan application does have a comprehensive soil erosion sediment control plan, um, which includes, you know, steel fences and things of that nature to ensure, you know, there's, there's no sediment and, you know, or soil or anything of that nature that migrates off-site. Any drainage infrastructure, uh, is protected during construction. Uh, again, this is just a quick blow-up. Um, again, the Walgreens is here. I'm assuming you, no one's saying they can't see my cursor, so please let me know if you can't, uh, because I'm taking for granted that, that, that's coming through. Um, and again, we're just proposing an expansion on this side and this side. It is back a house space. Uh, we did put a note up here, uh, again, we're converting existing asphalt to roof area. Uh, and then while we're modifying some landscaped islands, what we're, what we're taking away from one, we're adding to the other. So there's a net zero change within the limited disturbance for impervious area. Quick blow-up of the zoning chart from the site plan, and I apologize, it is a little grainy. Um, the takeaway from this is really, uh, again, impervious coverage and the previously approved, uh, was 70.1%. Was proposed as 70.1%. There's obviously a slight increase to max. Um, was proposed as seventy point one percent. There's obviously a slight increase to maximum building coverage. Uh, however, we are significantly, we're, we're increasing from fourteen point nine to fifteen point four percent. Um, allowable in the VR Business Regional District, which we are in, uh, which I probably should have mentioned in the beginning of, I apologize. Um, but allowable percentage for building coverage is forty-five percent. So we're about a third of what is all, what is permitted for total building coverage, and we're consistent with what was currently approved for total impervious coverage. Uh, and then lastly, um, there's no impacts on parking, just to go on the record as stating, th- this is all back of house stuff, so parking is not impacted here. Uh, there were some adjustments made as part of the Chase Bank application, but nothing changes as a result of this. Um, just to put on the record, there is some, some slight changes to utility, uh, configuration to accommodate the, the building expansions. The existing utilities that run on either side, um, are getting relocated. Uh, blue represents drainage, which there's a couple drainage inlets for the loading dock, and then just reconfiguring some of the pipe runs to, uh, address the, the building expansion. Uh, orange is the electrical, which does get relocated, um, to a new, new location on the new wall of the building. And then this plan also shows the soil erosion sediment control measures, the stockpile area with, uh, steel fencing around or hay bales around it, uh, as well as the inlet protection on the existing inlet throughout the, uh, the limited work. Um, and then there's a small modification up front, uh, just to the building to accommodate the building facade. So I did want to note that. Uh, finally, to end with somewhat of a, of a pretty picture, although again, it's a little grainy on my screen. Um, I will note that the signage shown here is just for, for reference only. Uh, the tenant will be coming in, similar to the Chase Bank project, uh, we're showing a signage just to give you guys an idea, kind of aesthetically. Uh, however, that signage will be, um, submitted as a separate application by the tenant and not by, uh, Regency or Langen. Um, very, uh, simple application. I actually think I might have spent more time on this one. I apologize than I did on the Chase Bank. Um, happy to field any questions, comments, or concerns.
Thank you, Nate. Commissioners?
No, I thought it was a good presentation. Answered my questions.
Anybody?
Um, yes. I, I could, Ms. Ms. Chair? Cause, cause I, I guess the, the only question I have i- is that, you know, basically what you're going to be doing, you're, you're going to be adding a grassy area along the, just about the entire back of the existing and a new expansion area, um, to compensate for the, you know, I guess reduction in, um, grassy areas? So that,
So,
and, and you are not, i- are you gonna be putting any landscaping in that, that island? Cause it, it seems like it's kind of a big island, but it's right up against the building, so I'm not sure exactly what your intentions are there.
So, so the landscaping swap, if you will, is an existing, i- it's not up against the building. Uh, it's, again, it's on either, either side of the expanded area here. Um, if I go back to the aerial, um, right now, what, what's out there is, is just lawn area. Um, and we're proposing consistent with what's out there. We're, we're taking a chunk of grass out of this area and putting a chunk of grass over here.
Cause I'm, I'm, I'm looking at your plan, cause your plan says that you're actually taking six thousand nine hundred and forty square feet um, out of that major island that, uh, that's on the east side, that adjacent to the loading dock. And then when I look at your plan, you know, there's a little part, there's, there's one section where you're adding one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five square feet, and then there's another section that's larger than that, where you're adding five thousand two hundred and fifteen square feet. And the five thousand two hundred and fifteen square feet is right up against the building.
You, you are correct, actually, and I, I apologize. Um, again, I am.
That's kind of a big area here, and are you gonna put any landscaping in there or something to soften, you know, or protect some of that grass? Doesn't turn into like mush or just, you know, dirt?
Well, what's out there, what's out there now is grass. Um, quite honestly, we tend to, you know, especially back of house, quite honestly, um, where aesthetics are less of a concern and, and, you know, and there are street trees, you know, the curb cut, you know, I guess if we go, it's easier to see here. You know, you have some pretty mature vegetation along the roadway. Um, so the building is pretty much screened from the public. Uh, the concern with doing anything interior to the back of house, a- and, and again, this is what the existing conditions, is really the, the truck movements, whether it's, it's vans, eighteen-wheelers or delivery trucks. When you start introducing, even, even up against the building, where we have, you know, tractor trailer, delivery vans, and you can see some employees are in the parking in the rear as well, just from the aerial, um, we're, we're, we're trying to keep everything low to the ground, so we don't have any, any potential vehicular, uh, safety issues. Um, again, it, it's, it's grass now. Um, not that there's, you know, we don't like to take advantage of the opportunities to improve upon what's, what's existing. Um, but the safety concern on the back of the building is really more of a, you know, was more of a concern to the, to the tenant. I should say to the applicant than the tenant. Um, just because there are multiple tenants, tenants with multiple delivery dates and schedules and things of that nature. Uh, also up against the building, we try to shy away from putting, you know, trees or larger vegetation that would impact the building, so.
I, I, again, I'm just, I'm, I'm just wondering if it, if it would make any, some sense to, to ensure that the grassy area remains grassy so that it just doesn't burn out and turn into like, um, and again, you know, looking at, you know, the other areas that are, you know, looking at this aerial, you can sort of see where I, I guess you really don't have any kind of real large vegetation in those islands, other than the fact that you're using that to compensate for your coverage so that you don't have, you know, more coverage.
Yeah, I'm quite, I mean, I mean, quite honestly, I mean, that, and, and I don't mean to sound dismissive by, by any means. It, it's grass today. The intent was to replace in kind and, and focus landscape improvements, um, you know, the customer experience at the front of the building. Um, the, the Chase, for instance, has a very robust landscape plan that we, we put in. And, you know, and part of the, you know, ongoing operations and maintenance of the facility is, you know, constant, you know, adjustments to the, to the landscaping, but I typically, you know, if, if Regency's gonna spend money on landscaping or any plaza owner, they, they typically want to do it, as I said, to enhance the, the, the customer experience, not, no offense to tractor trailer truck drivers, but, you know, not to enhance their experience.
All right. As, as long as we maintain that the grassy area is grassy is, is what I'm sort of.
Absolutely. No, understood. Yep, and.
So along the lines with Commissioner Suzak, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, Nate, but unfortunately, we do have a road behind the plaza. And as much as you say it's screened from the road, it's really not, and it's not attractive at all when you go down that road. And I would be more willing to, um, forego expanding the grassy area if you were willing to put in more, you know, say evergreens or something along the tree belt along the road. I understand totally what you're saying about the, um, obstructing the view and stuff like that for the trucks. And I think the only reason you're expanding to one grass area is because you're taking from the other. So, you know, like, to the lower right of the screen, you got a big open area right below property line, and it's wide open. And when you drive down Rosa Vella Avenue, I mean, you see the back of a pretty large mall that is not attractive. So, you know, it may be, a- and this is what I'm saying, I don't know if you would, um, be open to it or the commission, but if we could do some like low underlying shrubs in those areas or, you know, um, trees where it's wide open, I'm looking at what you have there. I'm gonna assume the wide open areas, the trees might have died or something happened if you go down a little farther.
Sure. No, I'm not a, I'm not, I'm, I'm catching up, quite honestly, because I wasn't, uh, didn't, didn't spend too much time thinking about, uh, about landscaping along the right of it. Um,
You know, like that.
It looks like a tree or tree did die in here or something of that nature. I mean, the concern would be, obviously, well, in this area.
The stumps, you can see two stumps right there that where the trees.
And what I was, what, what I was originally gonna say was I was inclined to voice concern about, you know, putting low ground cover, you know, that's not gonna, you know, have the opportunity to grow because these trees are mature. Um, that being said, I will, you know, unfortunately, you know, my client wasn't able to make the call this evening. I, I will say that, you know, with confidence, if, you know, it's a ma, if the, the commission would be comfortable with the, you know, replacement of, you know, and supplementation of some, you know, additional trees, you know, similar in kind to the species that are out there today, uh, to replace what were either damaged in a storm or, you know, didn't, didn't take. Um, I could say that, you know, our, our client would be willing to do that, uh, if there's additional landscaping.
Just scroll back for a minute and keep.
I'm sorry, say again?
Spin back a little bit. See, like, right there, those two, those two connect boxes, they're supposed to be out of sight of a roadway. And I, I mean, this is a unique plaza having a road run right along the backside of it. But any screening that could be done to block that view, I, I just think, a- and Commissioner Suzak, if you disagree, please speak up, but I just think that is more important.
I, I agree. I agree. In terms of, I think that, I, I was just wondering, you know, if we're gonna be doing something to, to, no, that, that's the best solution that you came up with, Commissioner.
And would the commission entertain, would permit us to, to work with, I, I guess, in the essence of expediting approvals, would the commission be willing to condition the approval that we work with town staff to, to supplement screening along the front of it?
So what, what?
Not that I would, no.
What I would be open to, and I don't know about the rest of the commission, but whatever the cost allocated to expand the second island is, you take that cost and you use it to, um, replace and upgrade the tree belt along the back of the plaza. So if it's a fifty thousand dollar expansion of that grassy area or a hundred, you invest that in the tree belt because I think it's gonna benefit the entire community. And that grassy area really does nothing for anybody, not even you guys. It's kind of in the middle of your way when those trucks are trying to pull in and out of there. Commissioners, what are your thoughts?
I think that's a good way to do it. Excellent, uh, observation, Ken.
Anyone else?
I think that's a good idea.
I like that idea better.
Go ahead, Nate.
No, the only, I, I actually wish I came up with that, to be honest with you. Um, the only question or concern I have with that would be, um, ensuring that the impervious coverage requirements are, are maintained. And I guess I defer to, to Jennifer. Um, you know, we're unrelated to this project, the existing condition is over the existing impervious coverage requirement. Uh, and very similarly, we, we had this discussion briefly with the Chase Bank that we had to maintain exactly that coverage. Uh, so we weren't tripped up in a situation where we ended up in front of the ZBA.
Yeah. I did notice.
I think that does throw a bit of a wrench. Okay.
Commissioners?
I did notice when you were, thank you. I can't hold my hand up, so I apologize. I did notice when you were scrolling past, um, for Ken, there was a tree stump there. So we know at least one tree didn't make it in the, um, see the tree stump? Oops, I just lost it.
There's two, I, I, yep.
Okay, so at least if nothing else, if you have to make, if it, if it, uh, if that grassy area has to stay, at least two, uh, plantings need to be replaced because they were part of the original approval and somebody cut them down.
Well, it looks like there's three. It looks like there's three in that photo.
Would you have a problem replacing those two?
I believe there's three there, Jenny.
Pardon me?
I believe there's three in that picture.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I only see two, but if there's three, I think he said he would not have any problems replacing the ones that were cut, that died off and were cut. And that should solve the problem, plus the, uh, staying away from the zoning board of appeals.
Well, it, it's,
Yeah, I, I would be.
I would request that all the trees that have died or been cut down be replaced. So maybe if the town went out, walk the tree belt, if they come up with, you know, three trees that are gone, they replace them. If there's ten, they replace the ten because that was a privacy buffer, I'm sure of it, when this plaza was approved.
Well, the only thing, Ken, is that you don't want to, um, penalize Burlington for, uh, the whole plaza's dead trees. You're correct, they need to be replaced. That's, that's in our zoning regulations, but management, other than the three or four, management would be responsible for replacing the other ones. I think. I could be wrong, but I think that's my understanding.
It's not Burlington before us, it's the management company.
Right.
So it would be on them, not on Burlington, I think, my opinion.
Correct. That's what, that's what I just said, Frank.
Okay.
Anyway, that's my thought on it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry. Um, so, um, there is the impervious coverage issue, and I believe that that's why they were going to cut one island and add it to the other.
Okay.
So.
So, like Nate said, so we don't, we don't touch the islands, and the only thing at this point is I would require that they replace the screening that has died off over the years and leave the plan as is. And I'm willing to, you know, um, make it a condition of approval, so it goes through tonight, if that's how the commission chooses to proceed. Um, and then the town just go out there ASAP, count the stumps that are, have died off over the years, and they're replaced.
Yeah.
Would that work?
Yep.
Nate?
One, absolutely. And I, I appreciate, uh, the, the commission's, uh, willingness to dis- discuss options. Uh, but I think that's, that's perfectly reasonable on our end. And obviously, you know, and we could take a look at, you know, the previous approvals to see what landscape plans originally had as well. So we, we ensure, you know, if stump got buried or, you know, we're not trying to, to get out of it if it's, you know.
Oh, no.
If it comes down to, you know, if it comes out of it, if, if it comes down to a matter of three or four, you know, four trees, and, you know, the previous approval was four, or symmetry dictates it'll look better with four, you know, we'd be willing to do that.
Yeah.
Right. And, and I mean, the front of the plaza is beautiful. Unfortunately, this one does have a roadway right behind it, so it kind of becomes an issue. So that's the only concern. That's the only concern I have, and I think Commissioner Suzak was, you know, he wants vegetation, and there was vegetation there, so if they put it back, I would think he'd be good with it, Rich.
Yes, I am. In terms of, and I agree with that. In terms of, you know, it, it would be nice, like you said, I don't think that that grassy area that's right up against the building is, is gonna be really beneficial, but basically, you know, if, if you're a bean counter, it, it does count against them for, in terms of coverage, and if they can live with that, you know, that, I, I guess curb cut or, you know, that raised curb and a little bit of grassy area there, then, you know, I think that everybody would benefit from.
All right. Any other comments or concerns from commission members?
Nope.
And Nate, you're good with that as a condition of approval?
Um, that works wonderfully for us. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
No problem. So at this point, I take a motion from the floor.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for the approval of site plan review eighteen twenty-nine Ten Hazard Avenue with, um, I guess twenty-six total conditions with the standard twenty-five conditions that we have, the, the three site-specific conditions that currently exist, and one additional site-specific condition that would indicate that, you know, there, there will be a replacement and supplemental planting, plantings added along the screen um, area, uh, adjacent to, you know, I guess the, the street to replace any missing, um, and previously required plantings.
Is there a second?
I can't.
Motion's made and seconded by Commissioner DeGray. Um, roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
For.
Um, Frank Alimo.
For.
Charles Land.
Charlie, you're muted. Charlie, you're muted. I see the top of his head.
He probably is for it.
There he is. Shake your head yes. Or no. Yes. Charlie's for.
Okay. Linda DeGray.
For.
Virginia Higley.
For.
John Petronella.
For.
And Richard Suzak is for.
All in favor, none against. Congratulations, Nate. Thank you very much. Thank the owners of the plaza for doing a great job keeping it beautiful out front.
I will. Thank you again. Appreciate it. Again, thank you all for your time. Uh, hope, hope to see everybody soon in a better environment. Uh, hope, hope to see everybody soon in a better environment.
Sounds good. Have a great night.
Thank you too.
Moving on, SPR 1830, 74 Palomba Drive. Is there anyone here from the applicant?
Yes.
Uh, please state your name and address for the record.
Dimitris Potetos, 74 Palomba Drive, Enfield.
And is anybody else with you?
Mike Del Conti.
Your address, please.
28 Taylor Road, Enfield, Connecticut.
Okay. Tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
I own a restaurant in Marlboro, Connecticut, but my heart policy was to come back to town because that's where I lived for the past 30 years. And I'd like to bring my home cooking back in town. I was working in town for 24 years. I end up getting my own restaurant in Marlboro, Connecticut again. I'm running a successful business for 11 years and I'd like to come back to, to Enfield. That's where my heart is.
Great. What, what type of food would you be cooking? What kind of restaurant?
Uh, Greek, Italian.
Greek and Italian. We try to give you a little, we try to give you a little floor time so you can promote your business. If this passes, you know, it's a free TV commercial for you, so.
Very delicious Greek and Italian.
There you go.
I've had it. Very good.
If I'm correct, you used to be the cook at Ann's Pizza?
Yes.
For years and years and years.
Oh.
Yes, I was, I was running the kitchen for 24 years, yes.
Yeah, yeah. That's awesome. That's awesome. You want to come back home? And if I'm correct, you said you live in Enfield?
Yes, I live on 8 Theodore Street.
8 Theodore Street, so that's good. You'll be close to home.
Yes.
Um, anything else?
No, like I said, I, my heart always was to come back to Enfield because since the time I came from Greece, uh, Enfield is my town, you know. I live in Enfield more where I was born.
Okay. And then I, going through the paperwork, I see that you actually own this plaza, the entire plaza?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, yeah, we have an owner, um, I think who has more at stake. So commissioners, questions, comments?
I have one observation.
Commissioner Higley.
I know this is, is this, um, I don't want to say petty, but when you go on the agenda, both, excuse me, both SPR 1830, excuse me, and SPR 1831 show is the BR zone. Um, I'm assuming that the other paperwork is correct and they're both BL, not BR. I figured I'd mention both at the same time.
Yeah, that, that just must have been, um, a typo.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something. Okay, thank you. That was only, I'm looking, I'm looking forward to him coming back if it passes.
If I'm correct and I'm dating myself, that used to be the old Smith's Dairy Bar at the end of that plaza, correct?
Yes. Yes, they made the best hamburgers there.
Great. Any other commissioners, comments or concerns?
I welcome the idea of having a person who lives in Enfield owns property and Enfield want to develop it in. I like the idea. I love Italian.
Scott, do you have anything you want to add from the fire department?
No, um, just was, uh, chiming in that with both the, um, the application to combine the three, uh, separate tenancies into one for his restaurant and then the proposal for the outside dining, um, nothing that I saw, uh, from what I looked at was, uh, jumping out at me as a problem with, uh, the fire department access, anything like that. It's great that the plaza will be occupied. With other things that are going on the other end of the plaza, it's going to be at a 100%, which is wonderful. Um, the only thing, just to remind the applicant, uh, going forward, that obviously, um, no comments, uh, to the negative from the fire department or fire marshal doesn't mean, you know, carte blanche and approval of a building permit. Um, you know, obviously we'll, we'll look at that and as always, we'll work very diligently with town staff and, and the applicant to get things done.
Great, great. Any, uh, any other commissioners? Seeing none, um, I'll accept a motion.
And Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the draft, draft resolution as for SPR 1830, 74 Palumbo Drive, um, as prepared by the planning department with, I, I think there's only 22 conditions because there is one site-specific condition that, that is included. But basically it just says that, you know, if there is any site-specific conditions, then they'll, they'll have to pertain. But I don't think that there are any site-specific conditions. So basically it's just the, the 22 conditions that, that are there.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and commissioned, um, seconded by Commissioner Alamo. Uh, roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
Charles Lad.
He's not, yes.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Don Petronella.
Four.
And Richard Suzak is four.
All in favor, none against. And congratulations. When are you looking to open?
Thank you. As soon as possible.
Oh, wonderful.
Great. Well, good luck and, uh, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on, SPR 1831, 74 Palomba Drive, site plan review. Again, uh, the applicants are here. I know this. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Dimitris Potetos. My home address is 8 Theodore Street, Enfield.
Great. Okay, tell us a little bit about what you want to do here.
For the outside ceiling is, uh, because the virus now, all the problems we have, I like to have outside ceiling because that's the only way I think we can survive in this, uh, situation, especially now, because we're 50% capacity up to now and we don't know how long this virus is going to go. So that's why we decided to do outside ceiling.
And do you have full-time staff going to be working in the restaurant?
Yes.
And what about live entertainment?
No, no.
No. Okay. That's the only questions I have. Um, commissioners, Scott, did you want to add? I see your hand still up. I guess not. Commissioners?
Um, uh, Mr. Chair, I noticed you brought up, you brought up the, um, music. I'm assuming that at this point they are not going to have, um, liquor. And if that's correct, I have one more question. I see that it's, oh, I'm sorry. No liquor, right?
I think there's a bar in a drawing.
I know, but outside on the, on the deck, the bar he has to, uh, never mind. I'm just talking about the outside deck. Is there going to be liquor served outside?
Dimitri?
That would. If you're going to serve liquor, it's a special use permit, not an SPR.
No.
No, okay. And the other thing is I noticed it's a raised deck. I assume you're going to have a railing around it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions. You gave me my answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Alamo. You're muted.
Yeah, so just for clarification on, uh, this last question by Jenny, um, there's a bar in the restaurant and she asked the applicant if he's going to serve liquor. And he said, no, no, I don't know if there's confusion about him having a, building a bar outside, but I would assume if he's going to have people dining outside, he would like to bring them a cocktail. Um, so we need to clarify that.
Yeah.
Dimitri?
Perhaps.
Yeah, we're not going to have a bar outside, but, uh, we, we can serve a, a glass of wine or a beer, right?
Um, Mr. Chair?
Go, Commissioner Higley.
When you have a liquor permit issued, isn't that a special use permit for any restaurant in town?
Uh, yes, it is. Um, I was not aware that there was going to be liquor served. Um, I think Rick, Rick has really been the, um, the front person on this application, but, um, a statement is required for, um.
Okay. Well, he could come back for the liquor at a later date. That wouldn't stop him from getting his permits to do his demo in his, uh, his building. But to my understanding, you cannot have a liquor license without a special use permit.
That, that is correct, Jenny. Um, yeah, so I mean, there's absolutely no problem with the applicant coming back for the liquor permit.
Okay.
I mean, you could certainly have a restaurant without it. And since we're having, well, we can't have it on the next meeting since it's a public hearing.
No.
But, um, perhaps during the, uh, if we do have a special meeting in August, a, another one, we could add it on.
Right.
Or it could be on September.
Right, because he, he's got to start construction, get his building permits and stuff like that. So I think he has a little time before he opens where he can get in front of us again, um, for that special permit. Are you okay with, are you okay with that, Dimitri?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Alamo, your hands up?
Yeah, just, uh, for staff to be sure that we expedite, uh, that process. So, um, when he's ready to open up, he'll have his license in place. Thank you.
Okay, and, um, Dr. Ellis, are you with us? I see your hand up. Might have stepped away. Any other commissioners, comments or concerns? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve, um, site plan review 1830, 30, is it 30 or 31?
31.
31.
31, okay, because, yeah. Um, as, as, I'm just, I just got confused on, because I think mine says 30 over here, but it's really 31. Um, 74 Palumbo Boulevard for, you know, the, I guess, outdoor dining with the 26, I guess, total conditions listed with four site-specific conditions?
I just want to clarify for the record, it's 74 Palomba Drive.
I'm sorry, Drive.
No problem. Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
Charles Lad.
Yes, he's four.
Okay, Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Don Petronella.
Four.
And Richard Suzak is four.
All in favor, none against. Congratulations again, and we look forward to seeing you open. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Moving on to other business. Uh, discussion of the plan of conservation and development. How are we making out?
So we, um, had, uh, the finance department is sending the, um, award letter to Goman and York, which was the, uh, consultants that we decided to go with. It really was a very difficult, um, decision from the review team. Um, we really went back and forth and the, with a lot of different items and, and thoughts. And then we, we did narrow it down to the two top, uh, candidates. And we, I think we all decided that we would be best, I mean, we would be perfect with either one of them. They were, both would have done really, really great jobs. But the one thing that tipped the scale a little bit was the fact that, uh, Goman and York is, um, real estate developers, they know how to market, you know, they have on, you know, firsthand marketing experience and they know how to do adaptive reuse for buildings because they've done it for themselves. And that was the one thing I think that really tipped the, the scale towards them. But it was a very close one with, uh, Malone and McBroom being the second choice. But so we should be in the next couple of weeks, working with the, the consultant and, you know, getting the contract signed. And then we'll be sitting down and of course talk, you know, inviting the PCC and we'll figure out where we want to go from here.
Great. Commissioner Ladder, Suzak, you want to add anything?
I'd like to add that, again, I, I voiced exactly the same sentiment as Lori, um, or I guess our, our town staff. Um, because of the fact that it, it, all the applications were, were pretty good and, and realistically, we could have gone with either or. But, you know, I, again, what we need to do is we need to definitely try to market some of the, you know, areas that are deficient in town or, or that are lacking, you know, profitability. And, and this might be a way for us to, you know, get some insight as to, to how we could actually, you know, make those areas flourish, you know, better than they are. And, and it, it, it was a tough decision, but I think we made the right decision.
Commissioner Lad, would you like to add anything? Nope. Okay.
Ben?
Sounds good. Um, great.
So I, I want, just, just, I don't know if you know of Conover Development? So, um, Mike Goman was the president of Conover and now this is now his company. So they truly have firsthand experience working with real estate and commercial development.
Great, great. And Rich, you think they're going to be able to report back to us, um, in incremental stages instead of?
Yeah, yeah. So we, we definitely made that clear in terms of, it was, you know, one of the conditions that we, we definitely sort of reiterated a number of times that, that we want to be able to look at, you know, the, both the plan of conservation and development in our zoning regulations and stages so that, you know, we get an idea of, of how things are developing and, and approve certain sections at, at, at certain intervals so that we're not bogged down with trying to approve everything all at once.
Great, great. All right, well, that's good news. Is that all, Lori?
That is all for now.
Okay. Uh, correspondents?
Uh, I don't really have anything. Um, we have a lot of applications coming in. Um, our office is jumping right now, so all I have to really say is, um, we hope that we can have some special, well, we have one, one on the schedule for a special meeting for August and another. Um, hopefully if, if the commission is open to it, um, hopefully after that, just, uh, to keep things moving because if we don't, then I think September will be crazy. So, but that's good that we have a lot going on, so.
That's great. Just keep us informed and let us know if you need a special meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Um, town planners report, uh, commissioners' correspondence, I'm sorry.
Um, Ken?
Commissioner Higley.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say how much easier it was for me personally to go over the packet, it, with the paper rather than on the computer. I had a lot more questions and a lot more observations than I normally would because it's hard for me to keep going back and forth on the computer. And I hope this is something we might consider doing on a regular basis. Thank you.
Anybody else? I would agree with Commissioner Higley, although the special meeting that we're having, the third, I believe we have all the documentation we need for that. So we wouldn't need to pack it. But, um, from now on, I would also request that we have the availability to pick up, um, packets at the town hall. Uh, hopefully not much longer and we can meet in the chambers again. It's just so much easier for everybody.
Yep.
So for packets, we, when we sent everything out, um, we gave you the staff reports and the, um, the plan sets. Uh, is that okay, um, for?
Oh, yeah.
For just packets because, um, so that all of the others supporting, um, smaller documents like applications, deeds, narratives and stuff, we're not, uh, copying all those things. Um, those can remain hopefully online.
Well, the problem, the problem is I could not open the packet at all. So any documents in there, I was unable to see.
Yeah, and I think that part of that problem was that, uh, we had, when we upload the documents to the website, we're uploading the full reports for engineering reports. And I know that there's one engineering report in and of itself that was several hundred. And I know that there's one engineering report in and of itself that was several hundred pages long, which is, expands the packet by obviously a lot. Um, so I think going forward, what we can do to remedy that is just, um, make sure that we are only putting the executive summaries up there in the packet for you guys so that it's not, um, such a, a large PDF to download. And obviously, we can still make sure that the full engineering report is on there if you want to see it. But just in that combined packet will do the, the executive summaries.
Good, I'm good with that. Commissioner Suzak?
And, and I agree in terms of, you know, I think that, you know, as, as, as long as we, we have access to the engineering report, just so we can sort of just take a look at, you know, what they're doing. And in terms of, I like to definitely look at, like, engineering reports. I, I don't look at them in, in significant detail, but it gives me an idea of, you know, the, how they're approaching their analysis of, you know, different zones and, on their property and, and where they're getting, you know, the water to flow towards, you know, certain detention basins and that. You know, so, w- without those engineering reports, it's kind of hard to figure out exactly what they're doing. So in, in that sense, I think we should always have access to them. And, and I might suggest that, you know, possibly, you know, we should just have our packet delivered, you know, rather than have it to run around in, in terms of, if we can get the explorers to still, you know, run, do some delivery for us. You know, that would more ease everybody's, I, I, unfortunately, I don't work in town, I live in town. But, so sometimes it's hard for me to pick up a package or, or, you know, make it sure that I can get there in a certain period of time. And, and I might not always do that, so I, I would prefer to have my packet delivered if possible.
And I was actually, I was actually thinking the same thing, Rich. I'm speaking for myself because I can get to the town hall, but, um, I know a lot of people can't. So, um, if, I guess we're gonna go back to the way things used to be and get our packets.
Mr. Chair. Um, Jen?
Yeah.
Um, when I came to pick up the packet, all I got was the PH twenty-nine seventy-nine. Apparently there was two boxes. And when I grabbed it, I asked the lady who was at the front desk, it ain't hard to know who you're talking to on mess. Uh, and I see this all lit, and she says, oh, yeah, that's it. So I do need, um, the site plan, uh, information for, uh, twenty-eighty. If I could get that delivered, I really don't have time next week to stop by the town hall. I know it's gonna be a pain, but it's kind of difficult. I'm running between Vernon and Manchester all of next week, so.
Yeah, I understand. I defer to Lori on that. I don't know it, what the policy is for, um, the explorers, if they're, if they're delivering or not. Um,
I, I don't know, but I just know that, and I said, are you sure? She goes, oh, yeah, yeah. And I took her word for it cuz I was, it was almost five o'clock when I booked, ran in, so.
Yeah, I, I saw that there was like half a packet in a box, so I think you grabbed the first half and it should have all been bound up, so that's, that's okay.
Um, not, I, I mean, this is all new and, you know, we're all learning, uh, but I do need the other part of the, um, public hearing. That's all. Thanks.
Any, anything else, Commissioners?
No.
No? Okay, moving on, Town Planner Report?
Oh, hi. Um, so, yeah, getting back to the packets, um, before this last packet, for some reason, last week was just a bear. I don't, I don't know what it was. It was like, we were just, we, we couldn't even like breathe. And, I mean, the staff stayed till like six o'clock just getting the master packet done on Friday, so. Um, but I had told you beforehand that, in, you know, in the future, we will be giving you the staff report, executive summaries, and the plan sets. If for some reason you can't open the master packet because it's too big or something, on, on the website is everything that goes into the master packet divided out by application. So if you do, if you can't find it in, in the master packet, it is already on site under that application number. So that is always there, just, just so, just in case you can't find something.
I, I understand that, but I'm working off of one laptop right now, and I shouldn't have to print out, you know, a hundred pages on something or something else. And it's easier for me, on my table right now, I have spread out everything that we're discussing so I can, you know, uh, bookmark the pages for certain things, I can write on them what, you know, comments and concerns I have, and, you know, try to be educated when we have the meeting. But if, if it's on the computer, I, I'm computer illiterate. And right now, I wouldn't know how to get off this screen without X-ing out of it and open up something else to get, you know, to a particular area that I need. So I am all for printed packets, like it used to be, and.
Right, so, so that's, that's what I'm saying. So, so what we're saying is, what we want to give you is the, 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 uh, staff reports and the executive summaries and things like that. I don't think you need the two-hundred-page drainage report when there's a five-page executive summary. But we're gonna put that, that report on the website, so if you do want to look at it, it's there. That's what I'm saying. I, I'm not saying we're not gonna give you packets, but we're not gonna give you the, the, the butters list and the application and whatnot. If you really need that, you could look at it on the, on the website. That's what I was trying to get at.
Commissioners, you're good with that, Commissioners?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you though, Ken. I have to. I mean, I don't have myself a problem getting into the computer, pulling everything up. But when I need to get to something quick, um, I need to have my paper. And, and I tried printing one time and two and a half hours later, my printer was still going. That's seriously, and you can't just eliminate what you can print, um, and it, it's right. I, I, I know it's a pain, but I, I look at the paperwork, I write on it, I, I go through it. It just, to me, um, the packets like this is good. And another thing is, I literally walked into the town hall, didn't say one word, just walked right in, grabbed my packet, walked right out, and not one person said one thing to me. And, oh, yeah, there were three people behind that glass desk. So if I can do that, uh, just about anybody could go in there and do that. I went right up, walked to the right, looked in that box and, uh, just grabbed it, walked right out. Not, not a word was said to me. Um, I think we need them delivered too. Just, I, I don't know, we're, we're so quiet about all of this, but that was kind of pretty easy for me to just do that. And now it's in the middle of the day, about one-thirty, two o'clock. Just saying.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your love.
So I will investigate the delivery. I know that they've, that we have the one delivery guy that comes maybe twice a week. I don't know whether he does the packets or not, uh, so I don't know if the, um, whatever the, the young police guys are that they do, if they're doing it. But I, we'll, we'll find out. If they, if they are delivering, we will certainly get it delivered.
Right, cuz I'm, I'm sure that, I'm sure the town council is not going to the town hall picking up their packets. And if people are concerned about COVID, you know, you look at, there's eleven commissioners going in and out of the town hall versus one, um, auxiliary police officer dropping the packets off on our front steps, so.
Yes, yes. Okay, so, um, I, I think it's the first time I've actually figured out how to share. Um, so what I pulled up is, is, um, this is from the Enfield website, enfield-dashct.gov. When you, when you open it up, like you do any, if you go, if you're surfing for anything, you go to your, your, whatever website you want. So now you're in the Enfield website, and at the top here, it says government. And if you go down and then off to the left, it says boards, committees, and commissions, and you click on that, and then you scroll down to your board, which is planning and zoning, right here. And this, you know, it tells you the rules and stuff of how to get into the meetings. It has the previous packets. This is what I was trying to say, uh, with Rich and Vinnie today. Or, um, you could join the PCC meeting through here. You click on that and it will have the, a live wind stream meeting. You can just click on that. Now, now I'm not gonna be able to get out of it. Get out.
Yes, up top.
Yeah, I know, something, uh, uh,
That's easy, huh?
It's, it's, I've got, I keep getting this, uh, pull-down menu popping in my way. All right, so how do I get out of this?
Stop.
Okay, at least I'm not alone, Lori, because.
No, no, trust me, I'm with you.
Of you, I'd be trying to log back in the meeting right now.
So I keep, I ha, I have, uh, my, for some reason, my, my bar for the, the meeting keeps popping up on it, so. But anyway, so further down on there, and in order of what is on the, uh, the agenda, here is new public hearings, fifty-five Cottage Road, this, here's the application deed, narrative. Everything that is relative to that application is on here. So if all you wanted to see was the application for one thing, you could go here and find it. The master packet includes everything that is in each one of these items. So that's what the master packet is made up of, is everything that's here that you could click on. So like, we're about to go on to, um, SPR eighteen thirty-four. So I, I could go down to the, down here, and you could be on this as you're, as we're even having a meeting. SPR eighteen thirty-four, maybe that is, here we go. So here's Ten Leg Way, here's the application, site plan, another site plan, and staff report and resolution. So I just wanted, I just wanted to show you that this stuff is there, it's on the website. This is what, anybody in the world can review this. So if you do find that you, the master packet is too big and you're not able to open it, you only want to find, you know, a site plan for one of the applications, this is how you can find it really quickly. So again, you go into the, the Enfield website, click government, go into boards, committees, commissions, find planning and zoning, and all the data's there.
Okay, thank you.
So, and if you can't, for some reason, you can't find a way to get into the meeting, you could go to this website, at the top is, is the, uh, current agenda. Again, join PCC meeting, or you could just click on the most recent agenda. And it's supposed to load, huh? I don't know why it's not loading.
Yeah, the only thing that I would like to do is, you know, that the commissioner should, should actually get an invite so that we know exactly, you know, the fact that we are having a meeting and, and it goes in, into our calendar. And, and once it's in our calendar, it's always easier to get, so.
She does. Everyone.
You should have gotten one, but it may have been an oversight or something must have gone wrong or something. But, I mean, I, I know that we usually send it to everybody, including applicants.
Yeah, you do, but that's what I was looking for tonight, I couldn't find that.
Yeah.
I had it.
I normally, yeah, I normally send those out, but I didn't, I'm not hosting this meeting. I was, I had a few days off last week, so.
Maybe I didn't.
No problem, that's, that's okay. I mean, we're all, you know, we're all learning here, so it's, it's fine. But that's what I was looking for tonight, that's what took me so long.
So, okay, so I'm gonna get out of this and, uh, okay, so, um, just a couple of the quick things. Um, we met the other day with, um, uh, I think it's, um, part of USDA, and I can't re, I'm not exactly sure which, which organization it is right now. But anyway, we're trying to get a, um, a study on freshwater Brook watershed so we could see if it's feasible to even, um, try to get any, um, flood prevention measures going. So we met out on site, looking at the freshwater Brook down by the mall. Um, we're about to start the Crogger Corridor Study that was supposed to have been started like last December or something. Um, that actually has been narrowed down due to cost to just around the mall area as opposed to all the way down to like Hazardville. And Farmer's Market starts this weekend, July twenty-sixth. Um, we will have, we've got music playing, there's over thirty vendors. Everybody has to wear a mask and social distance, but it should be a very nice event if you'd like to come. And, what was the other one? Oh, we sold out of the community gardens.
Nice.
So.
So who was the winning board?
Excuse me?
Who was the winning board for the donations?
Oh.
Contest.
I actually don't know.
Um, I do know that, actually. It was planning and zoning.
Was it planning and zoning? All right, you guys rock.
Way to go, guys, thank you. Hey, Lori, a question on the walk-around that you did for the freshwater Brook. Did you guys happen to go to the High Street Bridge?
Yeah.
We did not, but, um, we were focusing just around the mall area so we could show them, you know, the, the parking lots that were flooding and stuff. But they were, they were going to walk all of the intersections that cross that, that, um, the Brook. And actually, they're going upstream as well.
Because back in two thousand and five, when all those neighborhoods flooded, it was deemed that the, um, High Street Bridge was the choke point which flooded out the highway and the malls and all the parking lots, the neighborhoods, because it just isn't big enough to take the water. You know, some people thought it was the dam, but water flows over a dam, so that was not the holdup. It just cannot get under Route Five fast enough. And I know at the time, the state, uh, was not interested at all on increasing the size of that. So we can study all we want around the mall area, but until that High Street Bridge is replaced with a larger, um, uh, flow, it's gonna continue to happen, so.
Yeah. Um, that's the one on the, um,
Corner of High Street, Route Five.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, they were going over there, and we had already discussed that neighborhood. So, um, what, what, that, this is a full, uh, watershed study. So they're going to be looking at, at the main trunk and all the tributaries. And, and that's exactly what they're looking for, is all the pinch points. So it was just our first meeting, so, you know.
Good.
Good information to pass along. I'll make sure that I do that.
Absolutely. Try to be proactive so we don't flood the residents again.
Yeah. Good idea.
Commissioner Alamo?
Yeah, um, another, uh, uh, point to focus on, uh, I think would be, uh, the culvert under ninety-one.
Uh, yeah.
I believe, and, cuz I seen it all happen, I think that is a problem. I don't think that culvert was ever, when they widened the highway to three lanes in each direction, problem started right after that, um, that we didn't see before that. And I think that culvert needs to be looked at, as well as High Street. High Street definitely is an issue as well. And having some, uh, experience on that, uh, on that Brook, I, I would, I would look at that culvert underneath ninety-one.
All right, thanks. I, I think Don Cabibbo mentioned that one, too. I mean, he mentioned both of them, but, um, I'm not sure if they actually walked it yet.
Those are, those are the two spots, I believe, that caused the problems.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
Thank you.
All set, Lori?
Yeah, I think that's it for now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on, administrative approvals. SPR eighteen thirty-four.
Yeah, this is me again. So, um, this is, uh, Ten Leg Way. And essentially, um, actually, I think Mr. Gratzky is here.
I am.
Dad, are you here?
I am.
Oh, there you are. Look at that. You look a little bit like Vinnie.
Must be the hair.
So, um, so, uh, actually, I will let you explain what's happening and, uh, if, you know, just tell, tell us what your proposal is.
Okay.
That'd be good.
I, I believe w- w- we have, uh, already, uh, a special use permit to do some work on the exterior of the building, uh, to do a little bit of paving and, and add, uh, some doors for our use. And all we're looking for right now is to add a demising wall, basically down the middle of the building, uh, to split it. Uh, uh, our, our plan is to occupy half the building, and we have a tenant, Advanced Auto Parts, uh, that wants to occupy, occupy the other half of the building. So we're looking to put up a, a, a full-height wall right down the middle of the building. That wants to occupy occupy the other half of the building, so we're looking to put up a the full height wall right down the middle of the building. To to split it for two and we're told that uh that that we need to come to planning and zoning before we can get our building permit.
Can you just state your name and address for the record Scott, please?
I'm sorry, my my name's Scott Grodsky, uh my home address, I'm at five thirty-four Pinewood Drive in Long Meadow.
Thank you Scott. Uh Commissioner Alamo?
Sorry, my hand was up from before.
Okay. Um, I I had heard some issues that it's going to be the new space is going to be for a machine shop warehouse?
Uh, well, o- our space uh what is for a fabrication shop and warehouse. Uh, it's split fairly evenly between warehouse space and and a a shop to uh basically to 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 cut and join. Pipe that will then go install out out in the field, we're a construction company. Um, that that was always our use, my understanding is it's it's uh it's an allowed use already. That what we're adding is a tenant that is going to be purely a warehouse for the other half of the building.
Okay, so you're already in the building welding pipes and stuff?
Uh, we're not yet.
You're not yet?
Yeah, we're not yet.
But it's not really a machine shop then, you're a construction company.
Correct.
Right, because just the machine shop over the aquifer, I had some concerns about, you know, the cooling materials they use for the machines and stuff like that. But if you're just doing welding and stuff.
Correct, and we've already, we've gone through the process with the uh with the APA and looked at everything we do and everything that we will be storing there. Uh, and and we 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 don't have any concerns, I don't believe there are there any concerns that that we'll be able to uh get the registration.
Okay, commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Higley?
Just out of curiosity, if you can tell me this, uh do you have a um, will you have a lease with Advanced Auto and for how long?
Uh, yes, we 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 have a five-year lease with Advanced Auto at this point.
Okay, the reason I'm asking and um, you know, this probably is not a question you can ask and maybe it doesn't need an answer, but my. Observation is, once the five years are up, uh it is over an aquifer, so how how would we we. The planning department, how would you know that whoever comes in next would be in allowable use because they wouldn't have to come back to you?
I might be able to to put some insight in that, I mean, essentially anytime a new business comes in, they're supposed to register their name. And if and and then we find out from town clerk's office that, you know, new business is coming in and this is their name and we could always. Go out there and and check, I mean, obviously, re-tenanting is part of business and it happens.
Oh, I understand that, there was a uh years ago, there was a uh building that was cut up into little um. Little rentable cubes and they had construction in there and there was and they had storage in there, it wasn't zoned correctly, that's the only reason. I'm asking, not so much that it wouldn't be zoned correctly, but it would be an allowable use for the aquifer, but if you know that he's. That they have a five-year lease, then maybe you could put it on your calendar, five years, go check it and see if they renewed their lease and you'd be golden. Just an observation.
Now, my understanding is that any business that we would want to put in that spot will have to register with the town, is that is that true?
I'm not aware of that, I thought once you got approval for the the subdivision, you could just move someone in there, I could be wrong, but I'm. Unless you pull a building permit that the zoning enforcement officer has to sign off on, if you don't need a building permit, you wouldn't um touch the planning department. Right Lori?
Um, you know, every like I said, every built every new. Um, tenant is supposed to register with town clerk as a business name and also with the building department.
When did they start that procedure with the town clerk?
Do registering your business name?
Yeah. You do that with Secretary of State.
I don't know, they they always register business names, they're always asking us to verify things for them so they can register it, we keep the forms in planning.
Okay, well, so, thank you.
I don't know, am I, have you seen them Jen? I believe they.
For new businesses?
Well, I think.
I can't imagine every new store that goes into the square would have to register their business name with you.
They're supposed to. So anyway, I mean, you know, you could put it in the lease agreement or something like that or but, sorry Jen, go ahead.
Basically, what what I believe happens is is the town has revenue be- because of if if there's equipment, a town can tax the equipment that are is in for a certain business.
Correct, but they don't share that with.
So as soon as the business leaves, they're gonna say, you know, we're not gonna pay you tax because we're no longer here, so all of a sudden. The next person who comes in, the the town wants to get their cut of their business, you know.
Correct. So. They don't report.
That that's how you keep track of the cycles in terms of.
Uh, Rich, they don't report to the planning department. I bet you your I bet you your business, well, your business isn't in town, I know for my husband's business, they don't report, we never report our personal property. Once it's there, it's there, but it goes to the top to the tax collector, not to the planning department. And I pay it every year, so I know. And I'm not trying to make a big mountain out of a molehill, I'm just saying, you know, because it's over an aquifer, that's my only concern. I, you know, Advanced Auto would be a great person to be over the aquifer. You know, you might get somebody in there isn't a good steward and once it's damaged, you can go after them for monetary, but it's still damaged the aquifer and you can't fix it.
So what we've.
Just an observation.
So what we've been working with um Kim Zapla from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, the Aquifer Division. She's been sort of um helping us through this um restarting of the Aquifer Protection Program and one of the things that she. Says is required um now is that uh we have town staff has to be um. Very aware of the the registrations that are for businesses that are over the aquifer and we have to be um.
And when will you be up to date with those, when will you be up to date with those Jen, out of curiosity?
We're working on it um right now, actually, uh we have our um new assistant town planner Savannah Nicole. Folks really focusing on that, so um she's getting forms and things up to uh, there's a lot of templates from the state. That needs to be catered towards Enfield, so right now that's really what she's working through. And I think August will be a really big help for for our department, um trying to get these things um more on track. We already have a busy season regularly and add that.
Well, again, again, I'm not trying to, you know, kick dirt in anybody's eye, I'm just saying that. We need to be careful that we have procedures in place. It's not the gentleman that's here before us now, he might even sell the building someday and go away and, you know, we have, it's not everybody is a good steward of the land, so. That was my only concern and I think that it's been addressed as well as it can be, so thank you.
Scott, are you the owner?
Uh, I am the co-owner, yes.
The co-owner, so as owner, he will be responsible for making sure that anybody that moves into that building. Applies for the Aquifer Protection Program to make sure that they're registered.
I was told that was my responsibility.
That is your responsibility and I fully expect that you will follow through with that.
Of course we will.
Commissioner Alamo?
Thank you Lori.
You're muted.
The discussion we're having now about the aquifer, it doesn't really relate to this particular application in front of us tonight.
Yes, it does.
Am I wrong, I don't see that as part of this.
They will have to register.
Sorry?
As as the new tenant, they will have to register, but until they're the tenant, they can't.
No, what I'm what I'm what I'm asking is what we are looking at and maybe approving. Aquifer discussion isn't part of this. Is it?
Uh, essentially, no.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Okay, uh, do you guys want to move on to the other one or do you want to vote to let this be administratively approved? Rich, you're muted.
You you know, as long as we're here, why don't why don't I just make a motion that we approve, you know, we have all the information. And and rather than send it over to staff, why don't we just approve it and and I'll make a motion that we approve um.
I. SPR eighteen thirty-four.
Yeah, SPR eighteen thirty-four.
Thirty-four, yep.
Conditions that we have, well, actually, we don't have any conditions, this is from, you know, February, you know, two thousand and nineteen, we just approve it. You know, and and you know, just send it on its way.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any comments or concerns? I'm just concerned Lori, do you have anything that needs to be finalized with this application before we approve it?
No, I don't believe so at all, I think, I mean, it really is very straightforward, the the big thing is they're putting a wall in the middle of the building and you have two tenants instead of one. Parking is fine, um. It really is a very simple application.
Okay, motions made and seconded, um seeing no further questions, uh roll call please.
Ken Elson.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
Charles Lad.
Four.
Okay, Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
John Pachinella.
Four.
And Richard Suzak is four.
All in favor, none against, congratulations Scott.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Moving on SPR eighteen thirty-two eighty-three Freshwater Boulevard.
Um, so this one is just um for hot table, uh they have an approval for. An outdoor dining patio temporary um through COVID nineteen, um and they would like to make it permanent. So that's really all this is, there's four four tables, sixteen chairs technically can be signed up by the planning department. Normally, we would have just called Ken on this, but we were running so fast uh last week that. We just uh decided to throw it on the agenda.
You said sixteen total?
Four tables.
If I'm looking, yep, and two, there's two tables on the other side, so it's eighteen.
Oh, is it?
According to the outdoor dining layout. Am I looking at the wrong map?
Um, I have it up.
The backside says, hmm? Repose twelve by twenty-four seating area?
Um, do you have the engineered plans um?
Yes, Cranbrook Boulevard and Palumba, there's a hand drawn.
Okay, I think, yeah, I think that one's a different one, this one's for hot table, it's on, it's at seventy-four Palumba.
Oh, okay, so the other one we've already taken care of, it's not eight, it's eighteen on the other one, but sixteen on this one?
I believe so, the the plan that I'm looking at for hot table shows four tables with four chairs each.
Okay, well, I, you know, it's kind of hard to figure it out when there's no PH or SPR or anything number on the drawing that I'm looking at.
Yeah, this one is an actual art uh like an engineered plan with a site plan and um a layout.
Yeah, I got, yep, okay, I stand corrected again, sixteen, that's fine, because it makes a difference if it's eighteen, that's why I asked.
With no staff?
You'd need waitstaff if you had eighteen, you don't need waitstaff with sixteen.
Right, correct. Anyone else? Might as well go with this one too, Rich.
Um, I'll make a motion.
Question, I didn't get my hand up.
Let's go ahead. You muted yourself Frank.
Oh, thank you, um Jennifer, just um what's going on throughout the country now with the restaurant industry, just wondering um. Maybe more restaurant owners might, you know, think it could be a good idea to go ahead and uh research having a permanent um outdoor area. Um, is there something that we have in place that uh we can work with different applicants if that should come about? Um, just today I heard something about on the news sixteen thousand restaurants in the United States, some crazy number. That are going out of business because of COVID, not being able to have capacity, so I'm just to just to be so we're proactive as this starts to come. Do we have something um in place where we can work with these restaurant owners?
Well, that's why we would normally do it administratively and they wouldn't be in front of us right now, they would call, we'd have a discussion. But as they said, they were backlogged and I requested that the um ten leg away come to the commission and not be done administratively, they brought them both to us, so normally. They would do it in-house, make sure it meets the requirements and approve it administratively and you can't get any quicker than that.
Okay, good, so you have the tools in place should this start happening more often where, you know, okay, great, good, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Suzak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make a motion that we approve site plan review eighteen thirty-two eighty-three Freshwater Boulevard for the installation of an exterior concrete patio.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous? Okay, moving on, applications to be received.
Um, so in addition to the public hearings that were not heard um today. We also are working with Powder Hollow Brewery on their outdoor dining patio as well. Um, and we are working on the river um, the or not the river, the legal overlay district regulation update. Um, so those two things are what is what's pending right now, um. I'm sure there's more that I'm not thinking of off the top of my head, we've just been so busy, so, um, yeah. That's what we have to look forward to.
I have to say being busy is a good thing Jen.
Yeah.
Especially today. Okay, um, opportunities and unresolved issues. Combining.
Have an answer yet?
No.
You know, I um, you know, everybody has been really busy, it's kind, it's kind of funny because we've all been. We've, I was talking with different departments and it's like everybody is just slammed right now, so. Um, Deb still needs to do the Deb McCarthy still needs to uh research uh how the commissions got split, but. This next council meeting is really gonna be their first regular meeting on their regular night, run like a regular meeting, even though it's gonna, I think they're trying to do it in-house, but. I'm not sure if it's gonna work, but, so things are getting back to a new, a new old norm. I'm not, I it's, you know, so hopefully, um, you know, because their 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 agenda is a little bit more normal this time, so they're working back to. Running regular meetings, so um hopefully we'll have an answer for that soon.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you have anything else or anybody else does.
I don't at this point, no.
Nope.
I want to thank you all for um making this special meeting August third, those of you who can attend, um it helps move the town forward. And I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion, we adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do apologize for for uh us missing that notice, but quite honestly, I think had we not, we'd be going to midnight again tonight, so.
So the special meeting is gonna be specific to those two applications, correct?
The two public hearings. I I I I mean, there you never know, in the next week, we might be able to throw something on that we.
Well, then you'd be too late, wouldn't you, you'd be too late if anything else came up.
That we don't know, only if it was a public hearing, we'd be too late. So, you know, if we find another quick outdoor patio or something, we might throw it on, so.
It's good.
Okay.
Alright, everybody.
Thank you for all your hard work.
You guys too.
We moved on to motion.
Enjoy your evening, guys.
Good night.
Good night.